Everyone that's in attendance here and also those who are viewing by YouTube. In the past, I've heard some comments from citizens who are trying to view it on YouTube that they're having trouble understanding. So I would just encourage each one of us to use our microphones and to speak as clearly and distinctly as we can. And they also mentioned rifling of papers, and we'll try and keep that to a minimum. But welcome, everyone, and we're ready to start our meeting. The first order of business on the agenda is the broadband update by Kendra Hayden.
So recently, the broadband management team made their final recommendations for our planning and goals for our expansion process for the DHTD planning grant and also for the future of broadband expansion. I had Kristi include that in your packet. I did a summary sheet because the full-length document is quite lengthy, but it includes maps and some other information that you might want to review at a later time. But essentially, this document that you guys need to approve tonight will allow us to go further into our planning grant and into our VADA grant for future broadband expansion. Some of the items include the approach that we'll take, the adoption and usage, how it will affect residential and business demand, schools and libraries, public safety, and then, of course, what the county will include as far as budgetary contributions and those of that nature. If anybody has any specific questions, I can answer them, or if you've had time to review it, you can adopt it or however you would like to proceed.
I would just like to commend the group. It's a very comprehensive plan. It has some good goals and measurements for those goals, so I think that you've done a good job with it.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make the motion.
We have a motion and the board to adopt in a second by Musco Call. Are you going to do a roll call vote or just by short pens? Okay, all right. Let's do it the old way. I know it's hard to get back into it. All right, so we'll now have a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Kendra. Next on the agenda is the mutual aid and cooperation agreements for law enforcement services with the Sheriff, Shuler.
I'm just here to answer any questions if you have any. These are just our run-of-the-meal mutual aid with some other counties. I think these are Washington and Tazza. We're just trying to get them renewed up to date. This allows us to work in our county and them to work in ours.
Is that kind of just the brief sweep and short of it?
That's the brief of it. We do them all the time with towns and we try to get every county that touches us.
Right. Well, Board members, as you know, there are several pages here giving detailed information. Is there any discussion or questions?
Madam Chairman, I have one quick follow-up, and I think you may have addressed it just then, Sheriff Shuler. You mentioned the Washington County and Tazza County. Do we have the similar agreements with WIF as well?
We do, and you may be seeing those coming up for renewal.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
Given that the sheriffs are the same, we try to leave them.
Madam Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve it.
We have a motion, we have a second. Okay, we have a motion by Lori, and we have a second by Charlie Atkins. All in favor? Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Sheriff Shuler. Next on the agenda is the school board's agenda. Welcome, Dr. Carter.
May I pass out packets?
Yes, please.
Thank you. So everybody's.
Thank you. You're welcome. Good evening, and thank you for giving me a few minutes to share the Smith County School Board for FY '21 with you today. I would like to begin by just sharing our gratitude and thanks for the working relationship with the Smith County Board of Supervisors and the Smith County School Board in our funding public education in Smith County. We're proud of our school system, as I know you all are proud of our school system as well. We accomplish a lot of things every year. This year, we've accomplished something that we thought we may never have to, and that was switching to a full virtual instruction for our youngsters and also providing meals on a 48-hour notice for all of our students within the 452 square miles of Smith County. And that was a heavy lift, but it was accomplished through a lot of hard work and a lot of care and a lot of compassion by our employees, our teachers, our transportation supervisor, our bus drivers, our custodial staff, our administrators, our teachers. Everyone rallied to make that happen in Smith County. So I stand before you humbled. I stand before you proud. And I think the proud resonates from all of us in Smith County, being able to provide these services for our youngsters as we've transitioned through the COVID-19 crisis. The budget before you is, again, balanced with revenue and expenditures. I do want to speak a little bit about the revenue side and then the expenditure side, and then talk some about the accolades of Smith County schools and some of the accomplishments that we have made. As we begin, I do want to turn to page eight and look at student achievement, and I would like to highlight our State Superintendent James Lane and the State Board of Education has designated all schools in the Commonwealth as accreditation waived going into the next academic year. As you know, we were unable to complete the SOL testing, so all schools throughout the Commonwealth will have the accreditation waived status. Typically, I would not do this, but if you see at the bottom of page eight, we did do a tribute to our graduates in 2020, and it's a unique tribute there with a mask on illustrating how graduation did proceed in Smith County schools. So again, we're proud of our graduates. The next page, and I promised you I won't go page by page, but there are several pages I would like to highlight as illustrations as we move through the budget book. But our average daily membership, this year we budgeted, our current year that we're in now, we budgeted for 4,074 students, and we're budgeting for 4,032 for the next academic year. And you can see the trend analysis at the bottom of the page. We're seeing a downward trend in our student enrollment. That's not a Smith County issue. That's not a Southwest Virginia issue. We're seeing that across the nation with membership trends. Some anomalies, but for the most part, we're seeing the membership declining throughout. The next page I would like to highlight is page 16, and this is our revenue budget. It includes where our funding actually comes from. State revenue, $28,807,106. This is an increase of $1,221,051 from the current year. So moving ahead into FY '21, we're seeing an increase of $1.2 million. Local revenue, historically, over the past three or four years, we have received $7,815,575 from the locality. We are requesting $400,000 additional dollars for FY '21. Federal revenue, based on all indicators that we have received so far, will be level at $5,529,055. State sales tax, I would like to highlight for a minute. You see a reduction in state sales tax of $598,184. You, as a locality, you are dealing with the same issues we are when you're looking at predicting sales tax revenue coming in. Our calculation templates that have been provided by the Department of Education show no reduction in state sales tax, although we're being told, prepare for it. So what we have, the steps we have taken has been, we don't feel it's aggressive. We feel it's precautionary and appropriate, and we're withholding 15% of our state sales tax dollars in preparation of the impact of COVID-19 on sales tax revenue throughout FY ' '21. We also have CARES Act funds, as I know you all have received as well, and we will, we're using some of those funds. Our funds for CARES Act is $1.1 million. You won't see that in the budget. And the rationale for that is this: We're using approximately $500,000 of those funds to purchase, to help build a more robust technology infrastructure, to help our online presence with the end-user devices, whether it be Chromebooks or iPads, and also helping to build a more robust infrastructure to help those students who do not have internet access, whether it be through socioeconomic issues, they can't afford the internet service, or if they live in a geographic area where they cannot have access to internet access, which we know that that's a concern for Smith County and a lot of Southwest Virginia. So helping to navigate those issues. So if you look at the $1.1 million, we reserve $500,000 for that, and we're also preserving $600,000 for the end of '21 as a security measure in case the revenue projections fall even lower than we anticipate with state sales tax. So the budget plan before you, we feel, again, is conservative, but we also feel it's precautionary as we move forward to help meet the needs to not only begin FY '21, we've got to end it as well, and we have to maintain salaries. So we do have plans, the contingency plans, just in case as we move forward. The other revenue, you see an increase of $181,509, and that is just, that's various areas within the revenue budget. If you look on page 18 and 19, it's a breakdown of revenue from all sources for Smith County schools. I will spare you and not go through all of those lines, but I can address any question that you have regarding anything on those pages. If you'll turn to page 21, this is our expenditure budget. This is how the funds will be expended by Smith County School Board through a preparation with the Smith County Board of Supervisors. In instruction, we see an increase of $630,722, bringing the total in instruction to $35,686,768. And all that is tied to insurance and benefits, which I'll highlight in just a minute. Administration, an increase of $14,251. Transportation, an increase of $33,088, bringing the total in transportation to $2,546,120. Facilities, I would like to highlight just a minute. You'll see an increase there of $154,076, bringing the total to $4,494,531. Two reasons for that, for that increase in facilities. One, it is, we have been asked by the Department of Education to shift our salaries for school resource officers, and in our budget, we budget $132,000 for school resource officers. So we've been asked to move that from instruction to facility. So that's a natural move of $132,000. Additionally, we are seeing our security grant from the Department of Ed has increased, an increase in FY '20, and our hopes are that it will increase in '21 as well. And we've put additional funds there to handle the revenue and expenditure. So obviously, if the revenue decreases, the expenditure side would too. It would affect both sides of the budget. And food service, $3,773,795, a reduction of $28,711. And I would like to highlight, and I spoke with the Budget Committee with the Board of Supervisors last week, this is our first year with community eligibility provision, all of our students eating at no cost, breakfast and lunch, and it is just a phenomenal program helping a lot of families. And the predictability became very difficult after March the 13th. So this number, while we feel we're fairly solid, there may be some alterations as the year progresses based on the delivery of foods. For example, in the month of April, we delivered and served 106,000 meals to students in Smith County. So as we transition into the start of next academic year, whether it be virtual or traditional instruction, that may impact our budget within food service as we move forward. So again, a precautionary look and the best predictor that we could use moving into FY ' '21. And then with technology, you see an increase of $37,932, bringing the total to $1,432,661. Now, I would like to highlight, before we move on, the impact that the additional revenue and expenditure will make on Smith County schools. As you know, coming out of last budget season, and I spoke to this, I think at the public hearing, that we, that our Smith County School Board had formed a committee of teachers to examine the teacher salary scale. And I've got, that was probably one of the most enjoyable committees that I have served on. We had Mr. Todd Williams, who is a board member for us, serve on the committee as board representation, and several teachers from all different groups. We had a beginning teacher, a teacher at Step 5, Step 10, Step 15, '20, '25, and '30 and beyond the teacher scale, and a lot of great dialogue. And as you know, our salary scale, if you look at a traditional salary scale, what you'd expect, there would be an upward trajectory, and that was our goal. And when we, our salary scale last year, and again, our plan was, take 3% at the top of the scale, apply it from top to bottom. That was our intent, which we implemented, and what it created was a lull. It created a lull midstream with our salary scale. So we devised a plan to really fix that and look beautifully. State budget coming out from Governor's Budget, General Assembly was great, we were going to be able to implement. We were looking at significant salary increases at the middle of the salary scale, and really for everyone, and then COVID-19. So we reacted accordingly. The beauty of the work that was completed by the teachers and the staff at Central Office and board members was it was scalable. It was, you could reduce it by half and it still fixed your problem. You could reduce it by a quarter, it would still fix your problem. And based on revenue projections from the state, and again, with the additional $400,000 from the locality, we're able to do a third of our original plan. And I did share with the Budget Committee last week those numbers and comparisons. In the middle of the salary scale, you're seeing a 3.8, around a 3.8% salary increase for teachers. Beginning of the teacher salary, it's very minimal. But keep in mind, over the past couple of years, we have infused several dollars there to fix the beginning of the teacher salary scale, and you'll see that grow from a minimalistic approach to 3.8% around Step 15, 15, 16. So again, with the help of a group, we'll have a third of our overall intent, but again, it fixes our issue with the trajectory of the salary scale. I would also like to highlight, as you know, the Governor has unallotted funds. And if you think about it, un allotment, it means, I have it, but I'm not giving it to you at this point. We're just going to hold on to it maybe later. And right now, that's what we're hoping for, is that the state will rebound, state budgets will look better. We know the General Assembly will pull back together in August, is what we're hearing. And at that point, based on revenue projections, some of those funds may be reallocated to school divisions. So I'm presenting the budget to you with the caveat of, I may be back asking for the additional state funds that are intended for school systems to be allocated and appropriated to Smith County schools. So we're presenting without those funds, but in hopes I will be back to see them. So again, a third of the salary scale. The second thing is increase a nurse from part-time to full-time at Chilhauie Elementary School. And again, we base that strictly on data, and it's the number of kids, the number of visits to the school nurse. And there, we had a part-time, and it just not meeting the needs of our students, so increasing that position from part-time to full-time. We did have an instructional aid position that due to some needs of a youngster, some special needs of a youngster, we need to hire an additional instructional aide, and also increase an aide from part-time to full-time in two separate situations, and increase substitute pay to $95 per day for a retiree from Smith County schools, which is a $15 per day increase, and that will help, hopefully help solve some of our issues with finding substitutes for our classrooms. Additionally, within the budget, you'll find that there is a $28 per pay period per insurance plan, additional contribution. We were fortunate this year to receive a 0% increase from local choice, so we did build into the budget an additional $28 per month per plan to help lower our insurance costs. And just to remind you, we have three plans. We have a 500, a 1,000 high deductible, and we offer an employee-only, a plus-one, and a family plan. So that would apply to all facets, $28 additional per plan. And something new that we're very excited about, and I think it's very fitting for Southwest and really any career and technical education center, but starting an HVAC program at the Career Center and hiring a part-time position there. So while we had high aspirations going into the FY '21 budget, those are the things that we are able to accomplish with the state funds coming in, the precautionary approach with state sales tax withholding and additional contributions from the Board of Supervisors. I would also like to highlight the debt service component for Smith County schools. We see a slight decrease of $1,522. This is on page 25. So we are seeing a slight reduction, and there are several projects that we are working collectively to pay off in Smith County schools, but a slight reduction, bringing the total And I would like to take just one more minute to highlight a couple of things. Smith County schools, we have 657 full-time employees, 63 part-time. This is found on page 30. 204 teachers, administrators have their master's degree, which is 46.2% of our teaching staff. 460 of our employees participate in our insurance program, and the budget does include a step raise at a minimum for all employees. So let me, you know, we spoke about teachers. All other areas will receive a step raise, a traditional step raise within their salary One additional component is that, as you know, minimum wage, starting May 1, 2020, 2021, will increase to $9.50 per hour. We will reflect that in our contracts that go out to employees. They'll receive, those that fall below the $9.50 threshold will receive a step raise for the first portion of the year, and when we transition to May 1, that will increase to the $9.50, and the steps above will grow incrementally to keep the separation. On page 31, a couple of highlights. Again, we drive approximately 2,682 miles a day. We haul approximately 2,100 students, and we drive over 482,000 miles a year. We also operate 12 cafeterias. Average number of breakfast meals per day, 1,400. Average number of lunch meals, 2,878. Total number of meals served yearly, 770,000, slightly under. So a lot of activity and a lot of hard work and dedication in Smith County schools. On page 32, to highlight a couple of the initiatives, or some of the initiatives that we have going on currently, and in fact, I think everyone in the room here has been, that's what the school system, has been involved in meetings all day long, tying to one or more of these initiatives. But curriculum recovery teams due to COVID-19, identifying the skill gaps that we missed from March the 13th and incorporating them into next year. Establishing online and packet-based program for education from March the 13th to the close of the year. Beginning next year, we will have a one-to-one device initiative for all kids, including our pre-K students, in the preparation of starting virtually if we have to. Again, our hopes are that we start traditionally, but we have to prepare just in case. So we'll look at, we are purchasing iPads for pre-K kindergarten and first, and Chromebooks for grades 2 through 12. Online learning management system selection and implementation, we should have that solidified within the next week and purchased. Professional development of virtual learning, establishing a trauma-responsive school community, which looks entirely different in a virtual world. So our job is to help our students that are in difficult situations overcome and succeed. And our teachers are phenomenal in reaching our students and make that happen. So looking at that virtually will require some additional training. And establishment of internships with the Ignite program, which we will have youngsters working with us that are high school students and being paid through the Ignite program through United Way of Southwest Virginia this upcoming academic year, this summer. Expansion of our alternative education program at the middle school, and hopes to, as we continue, to look at an alternative education program at the elementary level. And would like to celebrate our on-time graduation rate of 95.3, which is well above the standard. So again, I circle back. I want to reiterate, I stand before you with immense pride in Smith County schools. I am thankful to serve in this position, and I am completely in awe of the efforts of our instructional staff and everyone on our team that's meeting the basic needs of our communities. You know, you try to find a silver lining in a crisis, and the silver lining, I believe, in this is the weaving of the fabric of our community and pulling together to help others. So again, I come to you for any questions you may have regarding the budget that I just presented.
I just have one question. Explain to me about the Ignite program.
Sure. Yes, ma'am. Ignite program through United Way of Southwest Virginia, and our board approved, I want to say, five months ago to hire interns through the Ignite program. And we have a policy in Smith County schools that you have to be 21 years old to work for Smith County schools, or be in a program through college, community college, higher education, and have two years completed in pursuing a career in education. We have altered that policy somewhat for this Ignite program, and it's really utilizing our current students. You have to be 16 years old, and you come in and work, like Terry Hawthorne, our technology director, we have two students that'll be working with him. We have six positions that we'll be hiring for. Actually, our last date to hire is tomorrow. Yeah, it's tomorrow. So we have advertised, and we're hoping that we do receive enough interest to fill our six positions. But it's a great program, brand new, and we do have six positions to help them understand the educational world from a different angle.
That's wonderful. Thank you, Dr. Carter. Any other questions, Board members? Mr. Adler?
Yes, sir. My question would be referring around the Capitol Outlay.
Yes, sir.
And with the current conditions that we're facing economically nationwide, has there been any visitation or appetite to look at potentially refinancing it in some fashion? If not now, maybe kind of put your finger on the pulse of how the interest rates may go and...
Yeah, that's a great question, Dr. Adler. And we actually spoke with the Budget Committee about that. That's not something that we do, but we follow your lead. If there's a restructuring, you know, it's a cosign-type approach, but that's a charge that's led by the Board of Supervisors that will gladly help you pursue different angles below the interest rate. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion, Board members? Any questions?
Madam Chairman, I just wanted to let you all know how much we appreciate you stepping in during this pandemic. Everybody's trying to swim in uncharted waters, and we just appreciate the adjustments that you made and the teams that you put together to make sure that our students were served. It was particularly heartwarming to me to make sure that all our children were fed, because I know some of them don't eat unless they eat from school. So thank you all for making sure that happened.
It's our honor.
Well, and also, I'd like to commend you, because we had a conversation last year over the DAP and some of those salary scales, and I know it's not going to be done all at once, but I'm hearing a lot of positive things from the teachers, especially in the 14, 15, whatever year. Thank you so much for addressing that and for being all-inclusive with all the different players in it. So I think you've presented us a very good budget.
Thank you very much.
COVID-19 has definitely proven that teachers are way more valuable than anybody ever thought.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to make two comments by my end.
Sure.
First, you failed to mention page 29, which I think is security or...
Well, I would page it there. And then, you know, the number, he said went up to 8.2 million of local funds, but
that's a local, that's the recent increase of local funds that we've paid in the last 15 years, I guess it is. I appreciate the fact that y'all took the time and effort to work with us on that.
And a couple of things, and if you will turn to page 29, and this is a page that I could talk about for hours, and I know that I don't have hours, I don't want to monopolize your time, but if you look at page 29, that is the required local effort, and that's the funding formula that's provided by the state. And the required local effort dictates to localities the amount that they have to put toward public education. And historically, we've been funded around 115%. That's always been the goal, to be at 115%. And what's interesting about the FY '21 budget is we see a huge increase in required local effort. So if we were to maintain the $7.8 million that we have over the past three or four years, that would put us at about 103% of required local effort, so a substantial drop in contribution proportionally, if you look at the percentage. The budget before you, we were able to accomplish a lot, again, precautionary and moving forward, but with the increase of $400,000, we are still, thank you, Mr. Atkins for pointing that out, we are still at 108% of required local effort. And I would like to, you know, I told the Budget Committee this, any additional funds would be appreciated, and we will gladly earmark those for insurance contribution or salary scale adjustments. So again, thank you for pointing that out.
I just think it was important. My second comment, getting serious now. Since your pre-K and kindergartners are getting iPads, a lot of grandparents will finally learn how to use them.
Yes, sir.
That's true.
Yes, sir.
Again, thank you. I appreciate your staff and board members being here. Would you like to introduce them? I know they put them in a lot of...
Sure, I would like to. We have Ms. Doolby, our Finance Director, Dr. Chris Ballinger, Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Kyle Rhodes, a board member, Mr. Mike Sturgill, Curriculum and Instruction Director.
Well, thank you all. Thank you so much.
And Testing Director, he wears many hats. Mike has several hats. But thank you for allowing us to come and present the...
Thank you so much.
Thanks for this.
Next on the agenda is Smith County Public Library.
We need to schedule a public hearing.
Yes, we do need to schedule a public hearing.
Sorry, I just...
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
So...
It's scheduled.
Yes. So what date?
June 9.
June 9?
We have, yeah. Five o'clock, that pleases the board. We have a, a public hearing that night at 6:00 and 6:15 for the Conrock Regional Festival. So if you'd like to do it at 5, that will precede the other two public hearings.
Okay.
Do we want to start the committee? Do we want to do our preliminary work before we get them involved or...
Should we say 5:15 or does that get us in town or...
Or 5:15 is our citizens' time.
It is, yeah. Maybe 5:30. 5:30. 5:30 and June 6?
Night.
Night.
Do we need a motion to set a public hearing?
Yes. Do we have a motion?
Sure.
Is there a second?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? The motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is Smith County Public Library. And as we know, over three years ago, the decision was made to, um, disband the Smith Blaine Regional Library and to reorganize it and replace it with Smith County Public Library. At that time, going from a seven-member library board representing each district in Smith County to a five-member at-large library board, the least number allowed by the Code of Virginia, section 42.2-35. During the past three years, large numbers of concerned local citizens have appealed repeatedly to the previous Board of Supervisors to reinstate a seven-member library board to provide better equity and representation of respective districts on the library board. This is still a primary concern and issue for our local citizens and, uh, it's to be considered tonight at our board meeting at this time. Any discussion?
I'll make a motion, but we do it, then we can have a discussion, but I move, we, we go back to a seven-member library board with each district having one representative on that board.
Okay, and is there a date? Like by July 1?
July 1 is when I'd like to see it.
Okay. So we have a motion to reinstate a seven-member library board by July 1. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Dr. Adler seconds it, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Ma'am?
Yes, yes.
I'm 47, but I, I hate to restrict it to just one district. If we can come up with somebody good out of that district, I'm good, but if we can't, somebody better consider. I'd like to leave the loophole where they can, if we can't find one in some district, it may be hard to find the right person to serve. So I don't want, I guess what I'm trying to say is I hate to make it district-specific.
So seven-member board, non-district specific.
Seven-member board with non-district specific.
Yeah, okay.
South Smith County is the way you termed it.
So do you want to amend your motion, Charlie?
No.
No?
Vote it down.
Okay.
No questions. What districts are represented now? Do we have two on one district or anything like that?
Not at the current time. In fact, you know, we had just gotten it back up to five-member board with the recent appointment, uh, by the Atkins District. You know, we had a resignation from the Rollup District that takes it back down to five.
That's what I heard. That's why I asked this question.
Yeah. So, um...
My positions, but my district's positions vacant.
Yeah. So I think there's going to be, uh, an appointment tonight.
So there's one in Atkins, there's one in...
There will be one in Rollup.
Rollup.
Well, Atkins is filled, right?
Yeah, there's still one in that too.
Okay.
Okay. Well, so we're ready to go ahead and, and start to make our...
So each district will be represented?
Yes. And you already know you have Iris Rollup, which you're free to leave her.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Doing a great job.
Yeah. So if the other members are ready to make their appointments...
Do we want to amend it or not?
Okay, first, we got a motion on the floor.
Yes.
And, and you don't want to amend that motion?
I understand it, but I, I don't need to vote it down and cut it again for next one.
Okay, so we have a motion just to return to seven-member board, district-specific. Is that correct? We have a second to that motion by Dr. Adler. All in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Okay, so we can do those nominations later during appointments, is that okay?
I'm going to do it now.
Okay, why don't you do it now? What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I believe, I don't know what the documents are now, but that document's going to have to be amended to conform with your motion that just passed.
Okay.
So I think you should wait for that document to come before the board.
Okay.
And actually do the amended documents and then do the appointments. And then appoint the seven, and that's fine.
Yes.
It's your pleasure, whatever you guys want to do, but I think you should do the amended documents of how those people, wherever a paragraph needs to be changed. And then once that's done, the board approves the amended documents and then you make your appointments.
Okay.
Yeah, so the, but, the, the vacant seats that need to be filled now for the five-member board, go ahead and, and fill those seats so they can go on operating.
Right.
And then, and then do the document and then appoint the last two, two seats it would be.
But if you have two members from the same district, somebody's got to come off that one.
I think we're gonna, we're not gonna have that issue, I don't think, Scott.
Well, I don't know if you knew or not, I just wanted to point it out, but if you appoint new people now and you got two people in the same district, and once you pass that amendment, you're going to have to remove somebody.
Yeah. Currently, we don't have the, the issues.
Yeah, because my person resigned, so that seat's open.
Yeah.
And then what? Yours is open, right?
She's resigned.
She's resigning, right?
Yeah, gender change.
Both of them.
Place her, start and do that first.
Both of our appointments are just to fill...
Still, you'll have somebody.
Within the same district, right? So Wade's would be replaced and mine would be replaced. And that would, that wouldn't, the document would have to be amended based on that, correct?
Because I've just, I don't have seen the documents. My understanding is, it sounds like your document says you have a five-member board.
And our two appointments would still be the five-member board because his is resigning and mine already resigned.
So you have three members now, so...
Actually, with my representatives resigning, it took it back down to four, so you're going to just go ahead and fill your district now with your appointment rather than me filling mine.
Right. So that's what I'm saying. My, my appointment and Wade's appointment would make five.
Okay.
And they don't overlap.
And they don't overlap. Because you, Wade only has one, right?
In fact, you will be, yours will be fulfilling an unexpired term and they will be eligible to serve another, two terms if so approved. So, okay. So do we want to...
I'll, yeah, I think we just do a point while we're talking about it.
Okay.
Wade, if you want to go first with yours, that's fine.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Jim Payne of Chuout.
I'll second.
How do you spell his name, Wade?
P.
That's okay.
Is it Payne?
P-A-I-N-E.
Okay, with an, so Payne, like, out, but with an E, okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there a second to that motion?
I think it's second.
Oh, okay. So we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor? Any opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. So we're going to do all of them tonight?
Just nine, right? To nine five. To get it back up to the five, and then after we amend the documents, then we'll go to seven.
Okay, but, um, Danny is unmuted until the end of June.
Mine's not. Mine's already resigned.
Well, because you're, you're replacing one with, yeah.
Right. So we still, we still don't have enough.
Go ahead, Lloyd.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ms. Donna Rupert-Grier to the library board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Okay. Next on the agenda is the Budget Committee recommendation. It's Charlie Atkins.
I have a question.
It's on page 32.
Reading from the amendments that we had at that meeting. A raw data district supervisor, Lori Deal, made a motion to approve the budget transfer request of $20,000 from solid waste fuel line item into the landfill maintenance type items for improvements at the scale house at Laneville. Rollup district supervisor, Julia White, said it, and the motion passed unanimously. So that's the motion before the board to transfer some money for the scale house.
Is there any discussion?
I just have a question to you. Is it, are we doing that ourselves or contracting it out or...
Doing it ourselves.
Okay.
We looked at it both ways and it was just super dead in-house.
Basically, we're buying a pre, uh, a prefab shed and putting it in there on a concrete slab and doing it that way.
With electrical and an H-back and all that.
Okay, we have a recommendation from the Budget Committee. All in favor? Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Next, we have a report from the Ordinance Committee by Roscoe Call.
Madam Chairman, the Ordinance Committee met today at 4:00. Sheriff Schuler, President, he presented for consideration to amendment to Smith County Virginia Code of Ordinance Division, the cost assessment increase for prison processing, which would go from $10 to $20, which is, has not been done for, I think, charged it 14 years, wasn't it charged? So it's well overdue and it's a committee recommendation, but we need to set a public hearing for it.
Okay, so what date will be available for that?
June 9.
Oh, that's on June 9?
Yeah, the time, I know, we're knocking out the clocks, but the, the time has to be set. What, what do they have on it?
I'd say 6:30.
6:30.
So we have one at 5:30, 6:00, 6:15, 6:30.
Okay.
We have four that day.
All right.
I'll make a motion to set a public hearing for Tuesday, June 9 at 6:30 p.m.
We have a motion, we have a second. Roscoe is the second. All in favor? Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is the EMS Committee update by Lori Deal.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, we, we had an EMS committee prior to this board meeting. Uh, this has been an ongoing discussion for four or five years now. Uh, I know about a year and a half ago, uh, ad hoc committee was formed to discuss a plan moving forward on how EMS is handled in the county. Uh, that committee has not presented a solid plan to our EMS committee on the board at this time. Uh, we had some just discussion today about some of the areas that are lacking in service. Um, and we really want to look at how we're using county funding to, to fund it efficiently. Um, so we did not walk out of the room with a plan today. However, we do have an understanding, um, of where all the towns kind of stand on what they want to do and what they don't want to do. Uh, so we're hoping to move into this year, um, with a realistic budget and, and supporting the nonprofit entities and the town-operated entities, um, efficiently and then moving forward, figuring out how we're going to operate EMS, potentially maybe as a countywide system or something, something better, but...
So it will be fine-tuned?
It will be fine-tuned as we move forward. And it's going to have to be like a three-year, five-year, 10-year plan.
Okay.
But the discussion is still ongoing.
Okay. Thank you for that update, Lori. Um, next is an RFP results for voter registrar's office by Mr. Sizemore.
This is just a brief update. Now, a period of proposal that expired, and we received three. Uh, this will go before the Building and Grounds Committee. We'll get back to you all with recommendations on that.
Okay, thank you. Um, we do have closed, well, you...
I need my VHC.
Yeah, you have an appointment.
Yes, Madam Chairman, uh, the appointment to the VHC board, I would like to make a recommendation for Ms. Alma Roland to serve in that position. Uh, she's a retired dean from Virginia Hills Community College. Uh, she served there for 30-plus years, uh, so she's very knowledgeable about the community college system and obviously her heart is at, is at Virginia Hills Community College. So I think she'd make a great fit for this board.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. We do have closed session on our agenda report. I'm forgetting where is it? Well, okay. All right. I'm sorry, Scott, we will have an attorney's report now.
Did I steal your sheet?
It was in my mind.
Just a brief report here, um, just so you know, uh, this morning, the Virginia Supreme Court had made a ruling on the library case that had been pending for a while. Um, I emailed a copy of that opinion to you earlier this afternoon. I have one copy with me that staff can probably make a copy of if someone wants a copy. Uh, the decision by the Virginia Supreme Court was to overturn, uh, the decision made by the Circuit Court. And it held that that board, uh, did not properly follow the FOIA regulations in going into closed meetings. Uh, remanded the issue of attorney fees back to Circuit Court for a decision, uh, so we can talk about that later when we get a chance to digest what's going on. Um, but I, that opinion just came out this morning, so I wanted to make sure you guys are all aware of that. Uh, if you have any questions or where you're going to call me or send me an email, then I'll respond. That's all I have, unless anyone has any questions. All right, I just wanted to give you that update. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, next on the agenda is the Southwest Virginia Rita Mottiel Authority by Mr. Sizemore.
Uh, this, this comes as our, um, you know, final support agreement and vote of the refinancing. And, um, Mr. Atkins has spoken to us several different times about refinancing, uh, the debt for the jail. Uh, I can't remember the amount of savings. If you can remind me of what that is, but there's a large number of savings. This, this is just a vote on this final document that has us in support of that refinancing.
All part is 3.3 million over all of the counties.
Yeah, both 3.3 million in savings. It's just...
That's great.
The right time to do it, savings have managed, it's not going to cost us anything anymore. And all I need is a, a vote to the effect to, to approve this support agreement.
Okay. So do we have a motion?
I'm in.
Okay. I love when it's, there's eagerness. Um, all right, Charlie, Charlie did the motion and Dr. Adler, are you going to second that? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. And now we have on the agenda closed session. Does the board want to take a brief break before closed session or do you want to keep going?
Keep going, ma'am. Keep going, Mom.
Keep going, all right. So we will now go into closed session. Do I have a motion for closed session?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion to enter closed session under Code Section 2.2-3711A1, Personnel Matters, Discussion, Consideration, or Interviews of Perspective Candidates for Employment, Assignment, Appointment, Promotion, Performance, Emotion, Salaries, Disciplining, or Revision of Specific Public Officers, Appointees, or Employees of any public body.
Just for a second.
Second.
All in favor? The board is now in closed session. Okay, we're back.
Oh, I can't say.
All right, the meeting is back in session. We need a motion to come out of closed session.
So may.
Okay.
Second.
We have to read the certification. What? Lori, do you want to read the...
Sure. I'll make the resolution for the certification of closed session. Whereas the Smith County Board of Supervisors has convened in a closed session on this date pursuant to an affirmative record vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Smith County Board of Supervisors, that such a meeting was conducted in conformity with the Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Smith County Board of Supervisors hereby certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening closed sessions were heard, discussed, or considered by the Smith County Board of Supervisors.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second? All in favor? Any opposed? So the voting is unanimous. We will now have Supervisor Conant. You want to start, Ross?
Everybody be safe.
All right, thanks.
I agree with what I said.
Sounds good. Phil?
I'm going to go with that.
I would just like to say, it's good to see everybody back today. It's been so strange for us to be here and there and everywhere, so it's good to have a little bit of normalcy back. It seems good, and I certainly appreciate everybody's hard work and endurance during this pandemic. So I think we're going to move ahead and see some things good happening for our county, and it's very encouraging.
Madam Chairman, thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight, and the citizens that were here, and our friends from the newspaper. Also, we'd like to thank everybody for their input. I know we have a lot of different mindsets, and I appreciate our discussions, and it's nice to see everybody's point of view. I also want to say that I'm looking forward to getting the budget process wrapped up and hopefully have a budget in place that we can all look at soon.
Charlie?
Everybody in June be safe.
Doctor...
I guess I'll dive a little deeper. I guess I would like to challenge the Board of Supervisors to maybe take a look on, I guess, the Budget Committee, to at least visit the option of a refi consideration for the debt load of the school board, and see if we could carve back a few dollars that might be retasked for something a little more important than paying a debt load, if we can do that.
I think we're all in consensus agreement on that. Thank you so much.
The other comment would be, obviously, with the COVID-19 that we're facing, I was so eloquently told by my son that we're living in a bubble here in Southwest Virginia, that we've not really been challenged by it, as he has in a greater city area north of here. Please take it serious, use common sense, and if this thing does get rolling, we will see the results of it. So common sense, wash your hands, and respect other people, whether you have or have not a mask on.
Right. Very good words of wisdom. I'd like to also thank all those who may have viewed by YouTube, and hopefully we'll be able, in the distant, or not too distant future, to have more normal meetings, but